Fantastic, fantastic. Well, welcome to the February Policy Committee. Good to see everybody. We will call this meeting to order. I do not see members of the public that I'm aware of. Does anybody want to address the Policy Committee? Fantastic, fantastic. I would like to offer a quick modification to the agenda if it works for my committee members. We have two policies that are on here, four point four and four point five, that are up for a second reading. I'd like to move those to four point one and four point two, and then we can say we had a productive meeting. Because then we can push those two policies to the full board for a second reading, if that works for.
So for four point, which one?
Four point four. Excuse me. Four point three, four point four, and four point five. To move those up in the agenda, I don't imagine there'll be significant conversation. And then we can push those for second reading and adoption. Is that okay? And I'll get there. Is four point six also for a second reading?
Oh.
No, it's not. Great, great, fantastic. Board approval of the minutes from the January meeting. Fantastic. I do not believe I was in attendance. So the January, I was in attendance. That was a different meeting. I also agree the minutes are good by me. So the minutes are approved. We will do again a quick modification to the agenda. So we'll talk about, which was previously four point three policy six one five zero transfers for a second reading. And this was the policy where we increased the amount for the transfers along with some other things. So. Policy colleagues, any questions, comments, concerns? Amanda, anything that we know about from between now and our current meeting? Fantastic. Then we will pass four point. Policy six one five zero to the full board in a second reading. Policy six two four zero investment policy, including six two four zero, the regulation for our investment policy.
Proceed.
Procedures, then we should fix that. Yep. So it should be six two four zero dash P. Any? Any discussion, comments, questions, concerns about six two four zero and six two four zero dash P?
Nope.
Fantastic. Those both move forward to our next board meeting for a second reading and adoption as well. So thank you for those. Let's return now to policy. Well, depends on what we're going to talk about. Right now, we have it listed as Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures. There were a number of policies. Thank you to Lily, Amanda, and who else? Mary. Fantastic. Thank you very much for the work. This is going to take us a while to clean up the policy book in terms of. Reese adopting new policies to be much more updated as well as the possibility of deleting all policies that are outdated. So we'll follow up. So. Lily, am I handing off to you for a second?
Sure, sounds good. All right, so we have looked at this as far back as March of last year. And you'll see there are a couple of PDFs that are listed in the agenda item for four point one. You'll see the policies related to Title Nine. That first one, that's it. And that's the PowerPoint overview that I provided, really looking at all of them and together and some general recommendations there. And then you'll see a much longer document that has all of the policies that are essentially related to Title Nine in one, in one place. So it's everything from DASSA to sexual harassment policies for employees. And then the third attachment is the one that we're really going to talk about today, which I had brought to you at the last policy meeting, which is actually relatively standard. Believe it or not, there's been a little bit of adjusting that we've done, but we've worked closely with our legal counsel to make sure that this is exactly what should be in place and also matches the procedures that we take when a when a, when someone decides to go the Title Nine route, right? So my understanding is last time you all said you were going to take a look, take a read, see what other adjustments or questions or thoughts you had in relationship to it. And then we could chat. How's that for some framing? Is that helpful?
Perfect, perfect. So in looking at the, well, one, we have two documents, right? One is called the ICSD Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures, right? And that's the seventeen page PDF document. That's the new version. It was last updated. It says here December twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. I imagine that's the much more current, what we currently do. And looking on the list of policies, and I know we have zero, one, one, five as a policy to consider today. But there are also other policies that have lines through them, which I would make the presumption that relatively soon we'll be considering deleting those policies. Is that fair? Is that accurate?
Yep.
Can I just mention, I don't know whether you're aware, but just today, we got an invitation for a pop-up webinar, which is happening tomorrow from New York State School Boards Association. And it is, the topic is a revised sexual harassment prevention policy. So that's happening at, let me find it again exactly. Okay, so it's happening at noon tomorrow. I have signed up for it and what it says, let me find it again. Actually, it's Bonshenkin King is, is doing this pop-up webinar. And the subject is New York's Revised Sexual Harassment Prevention Model Policy. So.
I presume we're in luck that this is a webinar from BS and K that we have cleared this with our legal counsel, which also happens to be BS and K.
Right.
Got it.
Is that fair?
Yeah, and I will just say it's a strange nuance, but in the world of education and education law, sexual harassment prevention tends to be in relationship to the New York State Labor Law. So when you hear the word sexual harassment, that tends to be it. So like when we do our staff training, our sexual harassment staff training, we talk about the three main buckets that folks are going to hear about, and there's sexual harassment Labor Law from New York State. There's Title Nine, which is a federal law. And then there's Aaron's Law, which you may be less familiar about. We were the, New York State was thirty-seventh state to adopt Aaron's Law into into existence. And it is really, it's a K through eight child abuse prevention and response curriculum-focused law. So those are sort of the buckets that you may hear about. So I'm not sure exactly what that training is, but it's possible that it's within Labor Law.
Yeah, they're not really giving me a description of that.
I can also check with Kate.
Yeah. Just thought I'd share that information.
So I'd imagine as the board, the Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Policies, while of course the board may have some questions or some comments, is not a policy that we are currently enacting or giving a number. But we are having a conversation about zero, one, one, five, and zero, one, one, R, and those overlap.
There's a level of overlap. They're definitely referred to in, in the Title Nine Policies and Procedures. It is a recommendation that ultimately it be numbered and become something in our policy book. We have to determine where precisely. When I've talked with folks at Bonshenkin King, you know, because Title Nine really covers anyone associated with the Ificent City School District, you know, we could put it in the five thousand series, or we could put it really early on. You know, zero, one, one, six.
So the Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures, it's the, it's the want or it's the recommendation that it be numbered and be voted on as part of an official ICSD policy?
Right. So it would essentially be P or an R, right, dash, R or P?
Pat, any questions about that process? Just want to make sure we are all clear in our, the direction that we're headed.
I also wanted to make sure you all knew that it aligns, I would say, quite seamlessly with our Code of Conduct as well. So it's nice that we've been attending to all of these documents. So there is connection as well there.
In fact, we even included.
We did.
Right, zero, one, one, five, that time, yeah. So how best to proceed? Do you want to, have you had a chance to take a look at the Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures? That's what's first on the agenda?
I have not gotten to work through the seventeen-page document.
I have looked at it, but not in great depth. Now I'm trying to find.
Yeah, one of the good things about sort of procedure is that it still can go forward because it'd be a first reading and it would give the entire board the opportunity to review it and ask questions and keep the process moving, right? And it would still come back to a policy committee for a second reading. So we'd be able to engage in further conversation and discussion as well.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I, I think that makes more sense.
So the, would it make sense to put a number that's before zero, one, one, five? After zero, one, one, five, or?
I think after. But again, I can confer with Kate.
We also have other policies not to get, no, I'm going to keep that to self. So the number of zero, one, one, six, is that what I'm hearing?
Potentially. Verify that as soon as possible.
Okay, right. And I should too, to make sure that there aren't current policies that NISBA recommends that already have that number. I also heard you say the possibility of putting it in the five thousand series.
So that's the students' series, right? I mean, it's, right now, we have this. You know, in the zero series, we have, it's short, it's small, right?
Yeah, the whole policies in it.
You know, our Code of Conduct has traditionally lived in the five thousand series. I'm more apt to put it in the zeros because it affects anybody, even contractors who are connected to the.
Then it doesn't seem to make sense to put it in the five thousand series.
Right, I know, but we, you know, sometimes we, we have visitors to school in the five thousand series.
Right, we have also some nine thousand series policies that, folks as well, so. We haven't got to the nine thousand series here. So, uh, something, right? So let's confirm. So how best to proceed? Are we okay with putting it forward and having Lily work with our legal counsel to, and we can check with NISBA to find the appropriate number and send it to update to Policy Committee folks?
Okay, Pat nodded and Moira said right, so I think, yeah.
So fantastic. So that policy will give a number. Tricia will work with Lily. We'll put it on the next board. Well, we'll talk if it gets on next Tuesday's agenda or after that. Well, that part we'll figure out. Zero, one, one, five, and zero, one, one, five are, are policies that haven't been updated in close to a decade, but now we have some update. Things to, that we should know about those two policies?
Redundant. Thank you. That was also redundant to zero, one, one, five, dash, R. Zero, one, one, five, dash, R really is about the, when, with a regulation, right? The hows, the how-to of the policy and specifically the Dignity for All Students Act. So we did a lot of reworking on that in terms of the definitions of, and then what the procedures would be, the way that we as a district manage potential violations of that Dignity for All Students Act.
These were the, we tried to ensure the that the definitions were consistent in the updated Code of Conduct. We also had a glossary with the Code of Conduct that has definitions. Can we, can, I haven't confirmed that myself. Have we confirmed that? Can we confirm that?
Say your question one more time.
That I, I know in zero, one, one, five, dash, R and the regulation that we did, not we, my apologies, that Amanda did a lot of work on the definitions. Are those definitions consistent with the definitions in the glossary that we find in the Code of Conduct?
I'm sorry. We, we'll need to check on that and look at it.
Yeah, I know, I know it's referenced. I don't know if the language is consistent.
Precisely.
Right. I mean, I think that's something that we would want to do to make sure our language is as consistent as possible.
And, and if the Code of Conduct definitions are better and more aligned with, right, what we want this to read, then I would suggest we, you know, go that other way as well.
I'm looking at the draft now. And I'm recalling that we had some conversation about this before, but so it's, it's headed definitions, colon, and then everything else is under definitions. Or, I mean, it, it, not everything else. Then, then it, there's another heading that's with a colon. Where is it?
Intervention.
Intervention.
Right.
And, and so I just find this a little bit confusing.
Right, should prevention have a colon or training, right?
Yeah, I mean, what are actually the definitions that belong under the heading definitions?
It would go through hazing, Moira.
Bullying, it would go through.
Correct, because those are all the different types.
And hazing.
Of violations.
And so then I think prevention needs a colon, but maybe even also just like make definitions, you know, a larger font, and then make prevention a larger font.
Or we could center it.
Or center it, yeah. Or, you know, under definitions, you can indent everything that goes under definitions. But in some fashion, just make it clear, what are the things we are defining as definitions? Or addressing as definitions, and what are the other categories that are being addressed in this policy?
Yep.
So like, training comes under prevention. So part of prevention is training.
So I, I would have another suggestion for cleaning this up a little bit because the bolded, the bolded word discrimination, bullying, all of these are also the first word of the scent, of the, the sentence. So you could just have, you could just take off those headings and bold discrimination in the body of the text, bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, hazing.
Yeah.
And I think that would clear it up better than anything. I, I mean, not to take my own horn, but just.
I think I would also humbly recommend that we put the definitions at the end of the policy. I know we had some conversation about that before, but that we begin with prevention. We go through what all of these are, and then at the end of the policy are the definitions that defines.
Yeah, yeah, I think that works for me. Particularly since the title of the policy is sexual harassment and bullying, prevention and intervention. So I think, you know, prevention and intervention should come first for granted.
Right, let's get to what's being done. And then for folks who want additional information about what we're discussing, that could be at the end. Okay.
Great. So folks, I've taken a look at the glossary and the Code of Conduct and also this, and I'm seeing alignment. So, good job, us.
Fantastic, fantastic. Okay, so for policy and my apologies for zero, one, one, five, right, we shortened. And I don't see it here on the agenda, though. I don't see zero, one, one, five on the agenda. I know it was only like a sentence or two that we cut it down to. Am I correct?
Two paragraph?
Two paragraph.
Yep, it's much short. It, I'm sorry, three paragraphs, and it's essentially about, it first states your commitment, and then it talks about the reasons why we're doing it. And then essentially it just says that about things that happen outside of school and alignment with Code of Conduct. So, yes.
So how best to proceed, good folks?
So where, so the, the policy zero, one, one, five. Does this need to be put forward for a second, a first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the.
And then the regulation.
Yes. And I'm trying to think, Amanda sent it to me, right? This has been something. Right, last message I have, Amanda, is that you, we, I gave some feedback and you and I were talking in October about the policy, not the procedures, right?
The policy, we, my, my recollection is that the policy was complete. We felt really good about the policy. And the regulation, all the things that you mentioned, those were edits. And so my apologies, this is either a different version or I didn't give the edited version. So we will make those.
All right, in terms of moving forward, what's the want of the committee?
So move these two forward for a first reading, the policy and the regulations?
So let me just make sure I understand what we're discussing. So we've already agreed to the policy a couple, a couple of policy committee meetings ago. That one went through, we've agreed we're going to hold on to. The regulations, if I, I don't know if we came to an agreement, right? But one is sort of changing some of the language, so discrimination and putting that into the sentence. Does the committee believe that it'd be wise for us to put the definitions at the end of the policy?
That's aligned with the Code of Conduct.
Which means I've already, seemingly that that is currently the case, right, that what we've looked at, which is fantastic. So if we make those two changes, then we will, I think we should, and we did have this conversation as well, putting these policies forward together. We will take a look at our agenda and our agendas coming forward and see if this is something that could fit on the very next board meeting, or if it should wait until the end of February to be on. And we can talk about that during agenda setting about when is the best time to have this conversation about these. Free, two policies, but one with a regulation. Any questions?
We're going to talk about that later in the meeting.
Talk about?
Which agenda, which meeting, which full board meeting?
Dr. Brown, Lily, Moira, and myself will have a conversation about where, what full board meeting this makes the most sense to be on a full agenda.
Because if, if all of the financial policies are going back for a second reading, we just can't hijack the whole meeting with policy.
Yeah, well, and that's the idea as well, and see what would be the best time for it to happen. And we still have one more policy and regulation to get through that may require a much longer, not necessarily immediate attention, but we already have these practices already in place, and we're talking about updating their language. So we're not stopping and preventing anything from happening that I'm aware, right? We're already doing this. We're trying to make sure our language aligns with our practice. Does that work? Fantastic, fantastic. All right. And then
Purchasing?
Purchasing, yes. We'll move to agenda item four point six, which is policy six, seven, zero, zero, purchasing. It's been edited. I know there was a conversation already in finance.
There was. There was a fantastic, there were a couple of things that you asked me to check in terms of thresholds, right? If they were okay with some of the monetary thresholds that we set in this policy. But there was also some language critique that happened at finance, which was fantastic. And so again, just shows the brilliance of all the members of the board, right, catching things in different committees. So I appreciate the opportunity to have to review that with Finance Committee because they really looked at the language, the way that we were describing items where we would procure them from groups that were made with, with folks who had disabilities. And the language that we use in the policy really was archaic, and they caught that. And then there was also a comment about expanding that to, you know, women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses as well. So I thought that was really a great addition. And that I bring forward to you in the Policy Committee.
So, so this has been revised?
Correct.
Since then, okay.
Additional questions or?
Just noting that there's, there is a typo on the line under the owned by minority classes or women bids or quotations is one word and not two. That's all.
Say it again for Pat.
Oh, there's a, there's a line that's, that's bolded here, owned by minority classes or women. The next line down bids or quotations, there, there's not a, a space between or and quotations. That's all.
And with great humility to my language friends, this piggybacking, an official legal term, like that's just, I have to ask.
It is an official term of art in this world of purchasing. It is not referred to, sometimes there are things called cooperatives, but this is actually a very unique situation where an entity like a municipality, a government entity would have a contract and you, they call it piggybacking onto that contract because they essentially did the work, right, to get those quotations or the RFP process. And so you're sort of swimming in their wake, right?
But the swimming in their wake is not an official.
That is not, although that's the analogy. That's.
Well, be prepared at the board meeting to be able to respond and answer that question. We'll have to bring the Oxford Dictionary to.
That's right. And actually wondering if piggybacking is a species's term, which we are going to have to edit out in future years. Yeah. God, I love poems.
Language is always a plus, so. Additional questions, comments, edits? Well, then if we're okay with this one, then I would recommend. Well then, if we're okay with this one, then I would recommend that we put it forward with the other two financial policy on the agenda for a first reading. So six, seven, zero, zero would be on the next board meeting. Combination of the two, that was, that would be for our first reading. We'll head back our way. Fantastic. Uh, Amanda, are you comfortable, given those pow, this policy that it doesn't have to go back to finance, it can just stay within policy? I don't wanna.
They offered those changes up and I think that they, you know, again, they respected that you sent it to their way and they're following it back, so.
Great. Great. So that works for Pat and Warren?
Yeah.
Great, great. We'll keep moving and next on our agenda is policy uh, five, four, two, three, administering medication to students. Excuse me, we have some guests with us.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So I, in twenty twenty, New York State Revised Medication Management Guidelines for Schools. And in the course of reviewing those guidelines against the policies that were published for the district, we recognized that uh, the policy referenced a regulation that did not appear to be located or able to be located in board docs. So coming through our paper archives, thank goodness for paper, we came across um, a regulation that had been adopted in twenty eleven, July of uh, twenty eleven. And so uh, we had, we identified no changes to the policy, but to the regulation, we identified quite a few, as you can see from both documents, uh, sort of a revised version and then one with all the um, recommended edits incorporated. And so the idea behind the regulation is really to serve as a guide to nurses and, and um, provide information to the public about how we go about uh, following through on the state requirements with respect to medication management.
Um, here are the, the biggest changes that you noticed in going through, I mean, I I can see the language, but doesn't sort of translate into practice for us. So what are the biggest changes for more than a decade ago?
One question, um, of just a few, uh, the state provided updated guidance on glucagon administration, which is something that wasn't available potentially ten years ago. So it to a, the way that we can administer epinephrine to students who are experiencing anaphylaxis, we have additional guidelines for glucagon for students who have diabetes. So that was one of the biggest things the state um, attended to. They also updated guidance around um, opioid overdose, overdose prevention, which actually will be attending to in separate policy around Narcan um, in a future meeting. Uh, and then they just, there are minor tweaks around medications, certain medications, particularly controlled substances.
And I, should I presume, or should we as a committee presume that um, even though our policy may be outdated, that our practice is already doing the things that you're discussing and talking about?
Yes, and we, so we had extensive conversation, Dr. Vindali and I and Bar Master as well about what is currently occurring in the district, so it does more closely align with our current practices. Um, and in culture too, so references to, for example, uh, him or her, we changed to their, et cetera.
The state also changed how they um, how they named certain students, like they're uh, the way they carried medication, how they, they just changed.
Thank you, yes, and terminology. I think you were given another supplemental document that wasn't in attachments. Uh, so the terms nurse dependent, supervised and independent.
Hmm.
And so some of that language, I think, persists, particularly among some of the staff who've, who've been in the district longer. But uh, there's a recognition that uh, these are maybe a little more clear uh, in terms of of the level of uh, autonomy that students can have around medication.
And who can administer the medication too.
Hmm.
Can we have um, can this be sent to us electronically as well?
Hmm, most definitely.
Pat and Warren, I don't know if you see the handout or the language that we discussed.
Yeah. Oh, oh, okay, that's what we're looking at.
And so one question we might have for the committee is whether or not, you just recently were discussing, including definitions, if we should consider doing the same thing to make clear what is meant by a nurse dependent student versus a supervised versus an independent student.
Hmm.
And this is in keeping with uh, New York State law?
Hmm, terminology, really. So um, I don't know that the parameters have necessarily changed around what defines a, a self, an independent student, but the terminology has.
So my apologies for a second that this is not it, this is a non-medical question. As a committee, at some point in time, similar to what Pat was just saying in terms of language and terms that change, it may be something that we wanna talk about in terms of practice about what language do we include and define? Given that I presume in five years, the languages and terminology will probably change again. Right, or, so does it, does it make sense for us to include this language? Um, this, I know it's what's currently doing and then it's also is a time to make a change.
I'm seeing one section of these procedures that refers specifically to students who are nurse dependent. But I'm not seeing like a, a systematic use of these terms throughout. Am I reading this too fast?
No, just in select, there are a number of places where the term supervised appears.
Okay.
As well as nurse dependent.
They're pretty important because they, they designate who can carry the medication and administer the medication, so.
So where we use the new terms, for example, supervised in parentheses, it says self, self-directed.
Yeah.
Um, which was the historical term.
Hmm.
I think given that, that's helpful, Dr. Vindal, thank you. I think we should include to make sure legally speaking, that we've identified who we're talking. I think we, we would be wise to.
Yeah.
That definition.
It's important for the nurses to use a new terminology, speaking to the state too, because everyone's now using sort of the old and the new and.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see the supervised areas now.
Hmm.
Additional questions? Comments?
I think we had some questions on, um, there are certain things that need to happen during medication errors, for example. And I think we have, we would like to put in who needs to be notified, but sort of in um, because we need to notify the parents, we need to notify the principal, the nurse needs to notify Carrie, they need to notify me, um, I think.
As well as the prescribe, prescribing physician.
That is currently in the regulation or something that you wanna add?
It's under the medication error regulation, but I think it would be helpful for us to have it in a specific work, especially for the nurses.
So help me, I'm not sure that I'm understanding with the.
Is right now it reads as a collection of um, activities to pursue when there's an error. We're wondering if it should be rewritten to really describe a procedure. To be much, a little more granular, so there's absolute clarity about who get contact, who gets contacted and at what point.
I guess the only, I'm just looking at it now, so I haven't fully formed this thought, but um, because the definition of medical error includes various scenarios, would the procedure and this, the order of the steps, would it vary depending upon what kind of error?
I do, I do think though, sometimes like it, I would like to see the medical director be notified before the parent, just because the most important person is the child that gets the medication. I wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing, so.
Because the variance, I think, is could be uh, things like are we contacting nine one one right away? Are we contacting poison control? Is there an immediate uh, threat of harm to the student?
Right.
Based on the error. And so one of the things we did discuss too, I think, is with the ability to contact the medical director, who in turn can contact the prescribing physician. Then the nurse can to, turn their attention, their focus to the student and engaging the parents. So there's a little bit of like tag teaming, triage happening um, with that approach. And we thought it might be helpful to really uh, detail that out.
Now, you're using the term medical director, which is not the term that's being used in this.
So there's, there's, so we have a, a great district because we have a medical director, we have a lead nurse, and we have a director of health and wellness, but.
So you're the medical director.
Yes.
But in this document, you're identified as the school physician.
Well, physicians.
Terminology.
So I should use that terminology.
Okay, yeah, I was just, yeah. I mean, I thought you were the medical director, but I didn't see that mentioned here. And I know that Carrie is the Director of Health Service and Wellness, so yes.
So this is the comment I was gonna make earlier and decided not to, and now I'm gonna make all kinds of mistakes and make the comment here. That we have other policies, that we have a policy and connected that policy is a regulation and a procedure. Right, so we have, we do have dash R and that B. What I'm hearing is that that may be something that may be useful in this situation, that there's this regulation that further outlines, and then we find a procedure of the way in which things should happen. So then I think we should do that, this, that we have the policy, we have the regulation, and we have the procedure if my committee colleagues are okay with that. We've done that in the past and seems to fit here as well. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, so is this something that we should put back on uh, the next policy committee to review in full and then to bring to the board, so we can work out some of the language? Maybe I think adding the definitions is a good idea. Um, making sure that we're using the terms or uh, the state that align with our district, uh. Trying to think of other things.
I am, I am hoping that our health professionals can make the distinction for us between what is a regulation and what is a procedure, cause this seems to be mostly procedural. So.
Some of it, I mean, partly what I'm seeing as well, though, is that, you know, what information must be contained? I don't know that that's right. I think that's more of a regulation than it is a procedure.
Yeah, and um, and then.
But then it follows up with school nurse procedures for the management and administration of medications, so.
So that's where we get into.
I, yeah, so I'm, so I'm hoping we'll have, we will have two shorter documents that tease this out and make it clear.
You can do it.
Yes.
Amazing, wonderful world of being on the policy. That we do, uh. Are there, do, do you have questions for us? Or I mean, as, as three members of the board, but that we should bring to the board as we go through this, this process?
No, I think this conversation around including procedure is incredibly helpful and, and really, cause we use policy and regulation and procedures to drive our training of the school nurses. And so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be able to work, to develop the procedure in full.
Yeah, and if there are points of information that you can, you can provide to us when the new document comes back and kind of like, I would appreciate, you know, how did you, just really briefly, how did you make these decisions and way, why things go here or there? I do not have a medical mind.
Well, I would go out in advance and I apologize uh, that we would probably ask for you all to join us on whenever this is going to the board to answer questions for more. Um, and to end, probably more importantly, to provide a little bit of context before even before our first reading, that folks know why this is coming our way, what we're trying to accomplish, things of that nature.
Definitely, thank you.
Fantastic.
It's nice to be back.
Fantastic, thank you, thank you greatly. Uh. So Tricia, do you have questions for us about the various things that we've tried to put in various piles for our next board? Yep. 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 Great. Board colleagues, any additional things we should be discussing?
Well, are we now on to talking about future meetings?
Future meetings.
Well, we've been uh, talking for quite a while about having some discussion about uh, board meetings, you know, the, the agenda, what's, what's the title of the policies that?
I think it actually is a procedures of the board, if I'm not mistaken. Board meeting procedures twenty three fifty.
Three fifty, so. We have in, very informally talked about taking a look at that. And uh, and then there are things that are, aren't in the policy that at all, but that, you know, things that we've been doing since, you know, some of which are since COVID, but
Yeah.
But issues of recording and and all that stuff, I think, should be part of the conversation.
Yeah, right, we've been discussing it for some time, so um, maybe that is on the next policy agenda to actively engage in that and a little more robust conversation about twenty three fifty. We did have conversations and let our other board colleagues know that we'd be looking at it and thinking about, if I'm not mistaken, more, talking about things like, you know, special presentations to start the meeting, right, and then go into public comment, or then go into um, exact or how we're gonna, how we can think about that. So, yeah, I think that warrants a conversation.
And, you know, back in October, I guess, when to the NISPA conference, I attended a session, maybe a couple of sessions, I'm trying to think, I have notes, but you know, where I was listening to what other boards do with public comment and response and uh, exec session.
Yeah.
Uh, when they have it, um, so those are
Yeah.
Uh, I think all are, are part of what I think we wanna be looking at.
Well, I'm happy to, let me rephrase that, I am willing to uh, send over a couple of sample um, orders of agenda from other school districts, and I've also done some of that research, and I think I have it readily available, uh, you know, and how their meetings are organized, that may give us some ideas, some you know, what we can do, uh, it's, it's pretty interesting in terms of what folks do. Some folks don't have public comment at all.
Right.
Some folks have it at the end of the meeting, right? Um, there are a host of different ways in which folks want their.
Executive session too, sometimes they have two.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting, yeah.
So we'll put um, two, three, five, zero, board meeting procedures on the next policy agenda. Uh, we've been asked, I have been asked if the board would consider having a conversation about student privacy. I don't know what that looks like, um. I'm afraid, I'm partly afraid of where that brings us, um, but I also know that our last policy may not be in compliance with what we do today, given the increased use of technology. Um, and that may not be something that comes up soon, but something that we start having some conversations about, so. Um, maybe that's a conversation to have with Doc and Lily and see what the, does that look like?
If, if what, do you, do you mean student privacy? What particular concern?
Yeah, so.
The identification of specific students?
Possibly, um, the immediate request was uh, a conversation about um, when and when we do not have things like classroom rosters that include. Um, when and when we do not have things like classroom rosters that include student phone numbers.
Oh.
Right? So fi- things like that, so not saying that that's something that we would consider, but there. We, we have been asked to.
Are there class rosters with student phone numbers? Though, you know. Now, aren't those PTA? Those are PTA, yes.
And that's partly my idea about reviewing the policy to make sure our language is clear.
Okay.
Like, I'm interested in protections to be possible. I'm not interested in expanding access to private information.
Um, what policy do we?
Uh, it would be in the five thousand series, part of it is. Give me a second and.
Policy five, five, zero, two, zero is a very odd title.
I would imagine.
Oh, maybe I'm, MI I in drafts, maybe.
Five, five, five.
Yeah.
Right, so part of it is five, five, zero, zero that we use, which is different and connected at the same time. Um, so maybe the idea is uh. We can have a conversation without trying to take on too much for the next policy meeting. That maybe in um, April, there's a, we take a look at NISBA's sample policy of five, five. Five, zero, is that what I heard, Lily? Three, five, seven, zero?
Of course, it's five, five, zero, zero, and then five, five, zero, zero, point one.
The point one, release of student disciplinary record seems a little more straightforward to me. Having conversations with other folks about, uh, I think as Dr. Brown said, the release of student information. Uh, without consent or approval is something that we may want to just make sure we're clear on as a, as a district. And so we'll take a look at that policy, maybe push that again to a March uh, slash April meeting is what I meant to say. Alright. Uh. I would be remiss if not to recognize. That the Board of Education has adopted a new code of conduct since our previous. Policy committee, which is an exceptional effort. Given that my policy colleagues and I spent a good two years. Before taking it on to a code of conduct advisory, which then spent nearly three years. To come up with a new code of conduct, so to Dr. Bryman and to Lily Towkit and to my Moira and to the. Pat, um, thank you, uh, that is a massive lift. We know that the work is just beginning and yet and still this, um, I think as I heard Carrie say, also helps us in terms of. Professional development and training in the ways in which we'll frame some of the work around the district, so. Um, that is a fantastic uh, accomplishment that is, uh, that took some time. That took some time, so. Thank you for that. Pat and Warren, anything else?
I am, can I just say I'm astonished by the number of policies that we managed to cover. Thanks to our chairperson stewardship.
In, under and out.
This, this is, this is the old Sean Evergreen. The person who lured me to policy in the first place, such, such efficient.
The next board meeting, so if that is it, we will call, we will close the meeting. Thank you, looking forward to it. I'll follow up with Tricia and we'll, we'll go from there. Great.
Hey.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, and I'll follow up with you all about the um.